Fault order, the Marshall City Council meeting for August 4th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Member Cheney Hugga, Member Gates, Member Hackworth, Member Skibby, Member Traver, and Member Underhill. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I don't see the Reverend Moran tonight. So we will skip to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask that the councils please stand. Thank you all. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Tonight, we have item six, public comment on agenda items. Item seven is our consent agenda with city council minutes, city bills, and a special event request. We have no presentations or recognitions. Item nine, we have one item as an informational item for the 2025 Action Plan Update. No old business, no reports or recommendations, no appointments. Item 14 is public comment on non-agenda items. That will be followed by, number item 15, Council Manager Communications. Item 16, adjournment. I would seek a motion regarding the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion support, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Brings us to public comment on agenda item. Items, persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items should be addressed during public hearing portion. Item 10 of the meeting agenda. Public, I'm sorry. Non-agenda items shall be addressed through the public comment, non-agenda items, item 14, portion of the meeting agenda. For anyone wishing to address council this evening on agenda items. Yes, sir?
As you already know, Barry Wayne Adams, 622 West Green Street. Now, that took like four seconds. Why do you give us three minutes? Because all we get in the minutes is the fact that my name and my address was put into the minutes. So what is public comment about anyway? But we're still going to do it because it's still America. Okay, second thing. Last city council meeting was back on July 7th. Significant things have happened and/or some autocratically generated reason, the city council meeting of July 21st disappeared and was canceled. But significant, significant things happened. And in spite of the claim of lack of business, a lot of things happened that involved the business of the city. And one of them was the July 16th public comment, hearing, virtual public comment hearing by Eagle for Ford and DTE to get their permits to be able to fundamentally proceed in the whole project, you know? It's like on the grandest, you know, the biggest green light that could be given. And there was significant public comment. Of course, the only effort at public comment by the pro-megacity people was from the MADA's attorney. We all know who that is. With the usual level of honesty and complete representation that we've seen so far. So you should have been made aware of that. There is still time to make decisions, you know, final decisions about whether that that whole project should go into operation. I just heard that there's only each month now they're selling 1,000 electric vehicles nationwide. Now, you know, divide that by 50 states, that shows you the real level of industrial or market demand of that industrial market. So it's dying out on its own. The people who wanted to impress themselves because they were early adopters or innovators. That market's been saturated. And people at large do not want them, they've already seen the disutility of them. All right, I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes, sir.
David Beg, 504 West Green Street. I recently received a letter from the city saying that there was a mandatory inspection of my home around possibilities of water concerns in the plumbing in my house. I first want to say I don't think the city's done a very good job of communicating with the public about what's going on and when it's going to happen and details about that. I have not seen anything in the newspaper about it in the past, and the past is the past, of course, but it used to be things of that significant, significant of a nature. There'd be a notice in our water electric bill about things happening in the Marshall that we needed to know about. I didn't see anything in my water bill about it. Some friends told me they saw something on the city's Facebook page. And of course, not everybody in Marshall has Facebook. And not everybody who has Facebook is keyed in with the Marshall's Facebook page. So even having Facebook wouldn't mean somebody would know about this. I'm a senior citizen, and I've spoken to other senior citizens in my part of town that have received letters, and they're very concerned about it. As seniors may have special concerns, maybe not different, but maybe the intensity of that concern is different. They're uncomfortable with people they don't know coming into their house, and they wonder if this is a mandatory thing. Couldn't city employees be trained to do this, so at least somebody from our own community is going in? One, one senior told me that when they came in to do the water meter change, so readers could read it from outside, the two guys that came into her house to do that work commented on stuff that was in her basement, and one of them offered to buy some of it, which seems really inappropriate. And these are the kind of concerns people have. Somebody's going to come to my house, see the layout of my house, see what I have in my house, and then what? Now, whether that's reasonable, these people may be bonded. But that doesn't, their being bonded doesn't eliminate concerns that people have. I did listen to the Facebook, I'm about done. Also, a concern is that if people, there is a problem found, people have to fix that problem at their own expense. Some seniors don't have the money to do that, don't have a bunch of money backed up. And one person told me they saw on Facebook, which is their primary source of news, is non-compliance major water gets shut off. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on agenda items? Yes, sir.
Regis Klinger, 348 Butler Court in Marshall. My comments are related to the 2025 Action Plan, which is on the agenda. The first one was on the, so one of the objects for the clerk is complete the ward reapportionment process. And there was a statement based on the 2020 census data, there's not a large discrepancy between any of the wards and the largest ward and the smallest ward. Well, I don't think you can go by the 2020 census, you have to go by the voter registration list. If you go by that, there's 300 amount difference between the smallest and largest. That's quite as significant when the largest ward is like 1,200, that's like 25% of the first, of the highest, largest ward, and about a third of the smallest ward. So I think that needs to be looked at again and rectified. You know, it says that what you do in mid-sense, in the middle of the decade, but that's, should have been done five years ago, since 2025. Let's, let's get something that's more representative, more proportionate for all the voters in, in Marshall. The next item was about, there was a under Public Services, Establish Major Campus Stormwater System Operations and Maintenance Plan. I hope that will be made public, the public will have some say, some input on that, and that it will be made known to the public. That's what supposedly community engagement and input is supposed to be about, letting the community have input on that. Similar note, it was on continued partnership with MADA and MUDC to develop the Marshall Major Campus. Ongoing work continues to identify opportunities to develop with the rainy land on the major campus. Again, that should have community input. The community should have some input on what kind of industries we want out there. Do we want the other three or four heavy industry like Ford or even worse? That should be something that the city should listen to, the citizens have. A vote would be the best, but even having public hearings, public input sessions would be definitely a wise choice there. Because I think people will remember how that's developed and will vote accordingly. Also, the master plan, I've submitted some suggestions, comments on that. I'd like to know who is reviewing those comments, and who do you talk to to see about that and how it's changed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Any other comments on agenda items this evening? Seeing none. We'll move to the consent agenda. We have city council minutes from our work session on July 7th, 2025, also from our regular session, July 7th, 2025. We have city bills, purchases on July 1st, 2025, of $464,628.62. Purchased on July 3rd, 2025, of $25,597.29. Purchases on July 11th, 2025, of $84,184.72. Purchased on July 18th, 2025, of $449,110.12. Purchased on July 25th, 2025, of $19,777.2. And then our June power purchase for $1,000,2653.42, for a total of $2,055,951.19. And we have, item C is our special event request for the Marshall home tour. I would seek a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
A motion of support, this is a roll call vote, please.
Member Cheney Hugga, yes. Member Gates, yes. Member Hackworth, yes. Member Skibby, yes. Member Traver, yes. Member Underhill, and Mayor Wolfersberger, yes. Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That takes us to item nine, informational items are 2025 Action Plan Update and City Manager Perry.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council. On behalf of the management team, I'm pleased to present the six-month update to the 2025 Action Plan. This is our list of goals that, as you may recall, way back in January, city council approved. There's 69 items that we have been attempting to achieve throughout the year. By the end of the year, we will give you our final report update on that. Some will be successful, there's always a few outliers, and we'll try to explain why, maybe what constraints or hurdles we, we encountered that didn't allow us to meet those goals. But again, just appreciate the opportunity to present these to you. We'll place this on the city website, so the community can get an update on those. And as always, if folks have questions, they can reach out to me or members of the director team to get specific answers on some projects as they occur.
Thank you much. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the 2025 Action Plan Update?
To City Manager Perry and city staff for always keeping their eyes on the ball and keeping us moving forward on our action plan, so appreciate it.
I like with that, got, there's a lot of very proactive and aggressive things on the, on the action plan this year, and I look forward to seeing them come to fruition.
There's a lot on that plan, there's no doubt about it, and that's, you know, it doesn't even count the day-to-day operation things that are occurring in the city, so appreciate that.
With that, it's voice vote to receive the 2025 Action Plan Six Month Progress Update. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I'm sorry? It doesn't say any viable motion. All right, I would seek a motion regarding the 2025 Action Plan Update.
I move that we receive the 2025 Action Plan Six Month Progress Update.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That moves us to item 10A, the zoning ordinance update, which is our sign ordinance revision, public hearing and approval. And Director Strange is going to introduce this to us.
Good evening. So I know that this was introduced at city council meeting a few months ago, but tonight is the night that we hold our public hearing and ask for approval to proceed with implementing this ordinance for new sign ordinance. I know that all of you have been engaged at some point. We've had a lot of discussions over the last year and a half related to the sign ordinance. We've had the help of progressive technical review, and we had a work session more recently, and those changes were included in that sign ordinance update from June 16th. And so tonight is the scheduled public hearing, and hoping you consider the implementation of that sign ordinance. Do you have any questions for me?
Not at this time. Thank you, Marsha. That will bring us to open the public hearing on the zoning ordinance update hearing and approval. If anyone wished to address council this evening on the zoning ordinance update.
Good evening. My name is Cindy McDonald, I live at 6303 Plainfield Avenue in Kalamazoo. I just want to say thank you for looking at the sign ordinance. I know I and another vendor have been talking to you for almost two years to update it, bring technology in, in order to make it better. We don't like sign blight or anything like that, but there's always an advantage of using new technology, new signage, and things like this. It could be for an event, an alert, or things like this. There's just a couple of things in here I hope you consider clarifying. For some things, a pylon sign is rarely recognized in here. Is it something you're going to do or not? Under some of the districts such as B4, previously you had 48 square feet in a signage, now you're going 32. It's smaller. You have to look at technology and see 32, and you take 67% of it, that's only 21 square feet. Some technology you're not even going to be able to use, so it's not even conducive, so why change it? Other things in here are a little in the gray area. I think it's very critical that it's considered and more spelled out, maybe examples put in, such as in Article 9.03, the general sign regulations. Under L and M, it just is all signs except, but there's no diagrams. It's very, very subjective to who's reviewing it instead of objective. So there's just a few things in here I would consider reviewing and making sure they're clear. So when someone comes in to get a signage permit and things, it's not hard for them. Sometimes you walk away disappointed because the community has written something, and you can't do it with the latest technology. But I do, I greatly appreciate you looking at this and updating it, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council on the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Barry Wayne Adams again. First off, I have to remind the council that whenever you make these kinds of modifications of ordinances concerning free speech or public expression, there is a sharp line between that which is protected by the First Amendment and that which is subject to government regulation. And only that which is concerning commerce, signage that is part of commerce, is regulatable. The other side of the fence, First Amendment protection, is, you know, the protest signs that we have down at the fountain. And we had a couple incidents in the past two and a half years where those distinctions were attempted to be erased. But after some clarification and just basic reading from the Constitution, the police have not been involved in trying to say anything about what we're doing, which is right. So, and another thing, the trade-off between modifying stuff to accommodate new high-tech stuff versus the city's interest in maintaining a general ambiance of its historical nature. And, you know, at some point, you keep doing it, and keep doing it, and keep doing it. It's more Jetsons than Little House on the Prairie. So those are the trade-offs. And the third thing is the whole idea of bringing up this kind of ordinance actually is in resonance with the things I have brought to the city council before about how we actually have a system of corporate fascism which operates in lawlessness rather than lawfulness. And whenever there needs to, you know, you set a law, which is supposed to be, expected to be regular and continuous, and then when something changes, boom, you come down, change the thing again. So it's just a continual generation of what ends up being whack-a-mole government. Because you end up making a new decision, problems are created from that, you gotta make more regulations, whack on that, and so, and so on, and so on, and so on. So just remember, our natural rights of the individual citizens and not commercial entities are to be protected.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on the public, on the zoning ordinance update for the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments, or discussion from council?
I have a few. Apologize for not getting this to you sooner, Marsha, but first, I think, just thank you for all the work that's been going into this, all the different meetings, and I know it's been a lot to, to do to get to this point. So I think we're in a great place to, to move forward and hopefully approve tonight. My questions. I use page numbers or under 9.04, signs not permitting, not requiring a permit. Number 10, window signs are permitted in the B2, B3, B4, POSD, FS, F1, or I1, I2, and HC, HSD. Shouldn't we be including I3 as well? That's one change I would request to make. And then under 9.09, permanent signs requiring a, requiring a permit. And this is specific to I1, I2, and I3?
All right, just a second. Trying to catch up with you.
Says that we would allow one wall sign per frontage. And I wonder about the scale of some buildings, specifically major campus, Blue Oval, building's almost a mile long, are we really only saying only one sign allowed on that building? I don't know if there's language we can have in here for exception to get approval for more, or if we should just look at this and say two per frontage. But I don't know what Ford's plans are for signage anyway, maybe they don't even need it, but thinking about a building that's a mile long, they may require more than one wall sign. Go ahead, Marsha.
Sure, anything wanted me to comment? I, I don't disagree with you, but I think that the ordinance is written for general, right? Like encompasses, you know, all, that, that section, right, is about how we assess every frontage and every building, right? Unless...
Yeah, maybe it's case by case, because then up to 100 square feet on a mile-long building is, it's kind of...
Well, and it's, so there's, there's information in there about percentage of your, you know, first floor building, you know?
Yeah, it's a total of 25% of first floor building elevation up to 100 square feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, so I think it's written, you know, in a general term to cover the typical, right? I mean, would...
I guess how do we address the non-typical?
Yeah, well, that's normally what the variances are for, right? If you have a mile-long building and you want, you know, five signs, you probably have a good case for a variance.
Sure, absolutely. All right, I'm fine with that. Under 9.10, additional regulations for signs requiring a permit under number four, projecting signs. AI, number allowed one sign per building. I would stress that we allow one sign per side of building. So for those that have side entrances or rear entrances and would like an additional projecting sign. I know there are some cases in town that already do that, and I think it is a nice addition, especially looking down a side street to see it, it may not be their primary entrance, but you can see it down a side street or a back street. So I would like to see us consider changing that from one sign per building to one side per side of building, one sign per side of building.
That got discussed, and we were, we kind of centered in on the, on the buildings that are, where the, you know, the back of the building's on the alley. And having a projection sign on the, you know, that that was on the back of the building would be a problem.
I think of examples like Stagecoach, the front and side entrance.
Was there discussion about gassing, like, the bigger trucks going down?
Yeah, so the alley.
Anyway, and that being a, that could be a potential problem.
Excluding alleys, maybe is the thing needed to do.
But when I'm a hardware store or something that, especially the part that juts up, that could, even though there's no, it doesn't appear there's any, I don't know if there's any overhead, I think... it doesn't appear there's any, I don't know if there's any overhead. I think all of that got put under, but whether, whether or not that would prohibit a delivery truck.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we can exclude the alleys, but I think about the Schuler's building, the venue nineteen zero nine, Stagecoach, those are three examples that have multiple entrances that are not in alleys.
Right, and, and I agree with you, that's, I, I think that that is a consideration, especially for those types of of establishments, because people ask all the time, oh, where do I get in? I just got asked this weekend.
When, and Schuler's did go through the variance process for both of their buildings.
So we could lean on the variance again, if that's what you think is best.
I
Wanted to bring it up to discuss at least.
Right.
One thing you might consider is if you wanted to put a caveat in there for secondary entrances. I mean, there's one thing to allow it across the board, right, to say, okay, if you have two sides, you can put up, you know, as many signs as you want on both sides, right? But there might be something to be said for, um, providing an option if you have a, another public entrance on a different portion of the building, different facade. We, that was not, um, I don't think that was discussed as part of our revisions.
I have a handicap access in the back.
Right.
It'd be nice to be able to, you know, people be able to be on as they're looking down the street or something. That access.
Maybe one per entrance rather than per building might be.
Still need to have that exclusion.
Yeah, one per public entrance, because like, I mean, people have backdoors and I'll take per public entrance and then you could write in an exclusion for alleys, keep the trucks. Yeah, I'd be fine with that. We're relying on the variance, as long as people know that that's an avenue they could explore. Um, the last question comment I have would be for same section, well, just below, nine, nine point one zero point six, maximum wall sign area. And we do not have anything listed here for I3. Per the comment I made a few moments ago, the size was listed as a hundred, up to a hundred square feet. But it's just not listed in this chart here, so that would just be one addition to shore up.
Would the desire be to keep it similar to the other square footages?
Definitely not, I don't have a head of what that would be, it's gonna look like on the side of a big, big building, but you would assume
Ten by ten.
Right, it's not big, but
Not really big in the context.
Given that we have several things here that are specific to I3, can this be passed as is and then brought back with a, an amendment in the future to kind of work through some of those I3-specific things, or would it be better to table and, or, I don't know, if we have a number of issues in the same category?
We, we can table it and ask for the revisions. Um, we could also, um, uh, make the, the revisions through, uh, the motion.
Yeah, I, um,
Wouldn't be a fun motion to walk, to go through, but
I made a couple of notes on what I might make as a motion if, depending on how the conversation went. Um, but yeah, back on nine point zero nine, we had for I3 wall sign up to a hundred square feet. For that nine point one zero maximum wall size area, I would think would be a hundred square feet. And obviously the variance would be in play, but just adding to the table, the I3 um, and one hundred square foot.
The size of
Well, that's what you have on
It, it is, there is size in there, but it's, it's still maximum of one hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I see.
Which is significantly less than what Oakland is allowed. So I can't imagine having a bigger sign there than, but again, the variance.
Overlay.
We'll play into the variance, but just at least adding it to that.
They're not bringing up the overlay district tonight.
That, that was it for my comments. I don't know if council has any discussion on any of those or doesn't agree with any of those, but I, I do have some notes to make a motion with, um, some of those comments if, if we would like to consider those.
I, I think the I3 being noted, um, you know, especially in a couple of those is, is significant. Um, is any, any other discussion, questions or comments?
No, I, I think, I think those were good comments and I would favor if we can pass it, you know, if we can come, come to an agreement on what amendments we might make and pass it, that might be nice to get this off our plate tonight if we can do it.
Can you, um, can you speak to the concern about the reductions overall size?
So I am not aware of I, I guess I hadn't been contacted by any specific, um, vendor that said like this, you know, we can't do a screen this narrow or, um, you know, that change in size was based on other cities' ordinances that we had dug up um, as a comparison, and that was part of that work session, um, back in June. So that reduction in size, I think, was a, a direct result of looking at a couple other cities', um, maximum square footage. It, yes, I, I would assume there are some limitations, you know, when you start talking about ratios of screens, right? Um, that, okay, yeah, you're going to be, you know, narrowing down a sign, and so, yeah, you're not going to be able to go as tall. Maybe it will be harder to get hit a, hit that allowable, um, area for the, the changeable copy or the, the, um, electronic sign. But I think that's that's part of the limitations, right? It's if you pick a size for the overall that you're trying to maintain, then yes, that does have some effect on how wide the screen can be. If you're maxing out the height, the width narrows up.
Um, would you also mind speaking to, um, the deliberateness in avoiding content regulation?
Definitely, yes. Um, the sign ordinance is all about size, location. Um, even when you're talking about temporary signs, it is, there's nothing about content. Um, there's no restrictions on, if you want to put a bunny on your sign, I don't care, right? It's all about location, content, um, length of time. We, when you get into the digital signage, um, the considerations were adjacent property, you know, and not having it become a nuisance. So there's, um, you know, there's caveats in there about length of time that the sign can be operational. Not as, it doesn't have anything to do with the content. It's about brightness level and it's about, um, you know, the flashing that might be, you know, we're, we don't, we don't allow flashing, um, so we don't have a nuisance for those signs. But yeah, there's, there's nothing about content. Yeah, a yard sign is a yard sign. We've got flag, or we do have a flag ordinance, right? And so it's about, you know, if you're, if you're over a walkway, you need to keep that walkway clear. I don't care what kind of a, what kind of a flag it is. Um, you just aren't supposed to have it over a walkway, right? Yeah, does that help?
I was looking through here and I couldn't find it, that's my fault. Um, where did we end up coming to an agreement with yard signs placement in residential yards? Because I know there was talk about where it was, how long it could be there, what if it was closer to the house? I can't find it. I was looking through it, but I don't know where we ended up.
And under temporary signs?
Yeah, so it's under um, temporary sign, it's under number seven.
Yeah.
Number eleven.
On page
Where it's supposed to be set back from, it's in D. That was nine point four.
Yes, um, so there is, there is a caveat in there for thirty days prior to an election, you're allowed additional yard signs. Otherwise, it's just one yard sign per frontage. Um, we have a limitation on the size and a setback, a minimum of two feet from the property line. So not out in the right of way, that's from the edge of the right of way back.
And then looking at, just going around tight after these, there's a number of signs that are gonna need to be addressed. Can you talk through what the plan for enforcement and contacting and working with different businesses and enterprises into getting them without just, you know, slap and think, like, what, what's the plan on how to start working towards compliance?
What I've been currently doing, um, as I am walking by a sign, if it's in the right of way, I just shift it back to not in the right of way as kind of a starting point if I, you know, um, just, so I don't, I'm not pulling signs everywhere, right? I think that, that's, I think that people would prefer that as opposed to me, you know, pulling signs out everywhere that they go. Um, there is, now, we are a little stricter around the fountain, that's, there's a lot of right of way there. I, when I pull signs, I usually, usually there's a phone number on them or something. I usually call them. Um, there was a, a series of signs on the light poles recently, um, was able to work with them to have them come down and remove those signs. You know, I don't think that anybody is looking to, you know, I know those signs cost money, right? So if they can come and get their sign and move it, or, you know, I can talk to them and I can say, hey, do you want me just to, do you want me to pull it, or do you want to move it, or, you know? If I'm feeling generous, I might go out and move it for you.
So if, you know, Billy's business downtown currently has a sign that now becomes on, like, they're using a, a banner sign as a permanent sign and it becomes
Yes.
Are they grandfathered in, or do we have to start working with people to update what they have?
I think, um, because in particular banner signs, um, we're already in the ordinance as temporary signs, and we do have some banner signs downtown that have been up for close to a year now, um, that I've been paying attention. Um, those, I'll make some phone calls as a starting point. Um, and then I think in particular in the downtown area, you know, I might reach out to the retailers group and just say, hey, just as, as a note, if you're doing banner signs, just reminder they're temporary signs, right? And, um, you know, we have things in the DDA like facade grants that allow for signage purchasing. So just, you know, there's avenues to kind of soften that blow a little bit, and that would be my, that would be my approach.
So, a couple of different questions on temporary signs. So according to this, it's one sign per household, it looks like. So would that go against, let's say during election season, you've got drain commissioner running, you've got governor, you've got proposal, whatever. So are we saying that you can only, you, you gotta pick one and stick with that?
So, so that's why so in eleven
Okay.
B, um, let's see, on page nine.
Yep.
Eleven B, additional yard signs are permitted during a time period of thirty days prior to an election to seven days after the election. Um, during, and during times of emergency to allow businesses the ability to adequately advertise business practices. So we don't have a number
Right.
limitation on there, um, during that election timeframe. You could also make the argument if you're, you know, when is, when do those different elections happen, right? There's gotta be some flexibility for that thirty days prior to an election. Um, that's probably, you know, it's probably thirty days prior to, um, absentee voting, right?
And then my last question is with the temporary signs, there's a church in town who has encouraged, uh, its members to make very nice signs as far as, and you see them all throughout town, and they are usually closer to the house. Are we allowing those? Are, according to this, will we now allow those? And it's
So I would say that, that's it, that is classified as a yard sign.
Okay.
As long as it's not in the right of way. You're able to maintain a yard sign.
Perfect.
I had one more. I had a question about feather signs, which is page nine. Um, number eight there. So it says, feather or teardrop signs are temporary signs permitted in residential districts for less than forty-eight hours and less than ninety consecutive days in commercial districts. And then it says down at the bottom, uh, and, um, and now less than a hundred and twenty-six days in a calendar year. I was just curious about, I don't know, I, so I wasn't at the work session, that was hammered out. It's because it was previously, they were not allowed, and then it seemed like it kind of jumped to now like almost half the year, a third of the year they can, they can be up. So I just wanted you to speak to that a little bit.
That was, um, you're correct, that was, uh, part of the discussion for the, um, at that, uh, work session, sorry. Um, so the idea would be that we could limit, um, even a commercial feather sign. I'm gonna use the golf course as an example, um, good or bad example, but, um, so they have some feather signs down on Old Twenty-Seven. Ninety days would kind of get them through the summer season, and that was part of the discussion about feather signs. Um, I know that some other, um, you know, commercial locations on like West Michigan Avenue, they have some maybe for an event, um, and that was, there's some language in here about, you know, if you're, if you have a sale on Saturday, that, that can't be up for all summer, right? So the intent is that if you have a sign up for a particular event, take it down after the event is over, um, and then you can put it up before the next event. So, yeah, it's supposed to be removed within two days of the conclusion of the advertised event. So trying to limit how long some of those signs are available or up, um, and then still allowing for the kind of, um, garage sale, you know, throw one up at the end of your driveway to get some major attention on a weekend. So, still trying to allow a little bit of that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ryan, do you think, um, with the protecting signs, they can't have them on the main, on the main road, can they have them on the main road? Michigan, Michigan have downtown building, can't have protecting sign, correct? You can? So they're gonna have, do you think they, it would be a case to have multiple, like on, like a corner spot, three signs like that? Or is that, and then they probably have a flat?
I believe in a corner situation, we, that's where we want to have that greater conversation with wayfinding signage for a community, what we're doing on corners to promote the businesses down the side streets. Um, also with the projecting sign the way it is in this ordinance, it has to be within four feet of the edge of the building, so you can't really be on a corner either. But I think, yeah, the, the greater conversation and consulting with somebody about wayfinding on yeah, the, the greater conversation and consulting with somebody about wayfinding on corners for those side businesses is, is crucial for our future development. But, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at multiple projectings on a corner.
There is.
Unless it fits into that other wayfinding plan and there's a strategic way to do that. To, in the DDA, to look at developing a plan and then putting that, maybe that gets adopted into here later.
If you were, if you were indicating like if there's separate tenants in same building, there's still a accommodation for a different sign for each tenant. But they're still held to those rules that they have to stay away from the edge of the building.
I think that's where I.
Um, having, having the, the option to have multiple, I think, doing the variance and coming to it, if we have multiple that have, I think most of the buildings downtown that have multiple ownerships that could do each one have something and now you're blocking, blocking, blocking. I don't know. I think the variance is where it'll help us in that case, in those kinds of situations, but how often is that gonna happen?
The only other comment I would make if council member Traver is wordsmithing his amendments, there is maybe for the I three, we should just jump to two hundred square feet immediately because it's, I think, more appropriate for that district. And if we can avoid bogging everybody down with going through a variance process for something that would be routinely approved, maybe we should skip past that.
I guess my question there would be is like, are we, you know, again, Blue Oval, uh, or, or really any other building of size, you know, they, they, are we talking just like the branding sign? Or is this like, does this include if they had a sign that said shipping?
So those, I would not consider those as part of your sign package. So that would be, um, like, so for instance, if you had a letter at every door for, uh, wayfinding purposes, you know, fire department needs to know where all the entrances are, right? Those are not, um, those are, there's recommended heights and all kinds of things based on, you know, the distance of the drive from where the entrance is. Those are not included as a part of this. Those are, um, you know, wayfinding signs. Um, the shipping I would anticipate that would also be kind of a waste, wayfinding sign. That would not be a, what are we calling this? Branding sign or, you know, a building sign, um.
I think we need to be careful though too, because with Oaklawn, all the wayfinding signs that they added on their campus, that was part of their signage allotment. So that did not get excluded as well. That's wayfinding. That's not included in your overall size allotment. So it, it was.
So, um, I'm gonna have a hard time finding it in here just on a whim, but I think that there are exclusions in here for, you know, if you look at the different types of signs that are not needing a permit, right?
But I mean, from, um, Mary Wolfersberger's comments, I, I'd, and Marsha's, I feel like it does need to be separate because otherwise it says only one wall sign allowed. You wouldn't have any of that extra signage for shipping and uh, whatever not, but I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of those types of signs on the building as well. So they should, they should be excluded and not part of that, in my opinion.
So what you find can also mean like a shipping sign out on Michigan Ave as a truck is coming through, I'm guessing there could be a standalone sign out by Michigan Ave that says shipping down this way.
I think this particular section is specifically on signs on the building.
Yeah, okay.
I think we really gotta love what's in here is nine point one three plan sign program. So like Blue Oval, for example, when they get to that point and they know where all their size is gonna go, they should be going through this application process to the planning commission and, um, presenting everything they had planned and desired, and then it can be voted on and eventually brought in front of us. But, um, yeah, I think we're probably getting in the weeds too much on this because it's just gonna be a variance anyway. But I, I appreciate that nine point one three is in there for plan sign program. I also want to comment that I love the nine point one two, the vintage sign design, which also adds some flexibility to the ordinance. Um, if you're retroactively designing your signs to match the historic integrity of your building or your business, which is awesome. It gives you some flexibility in sizes and things like that as well.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? You ready?
Yeah. I move that we enact ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, an ordinance to amend city of Marshall zoning code, repeal of chapter five point O site standards, section five point one signs, the addition of article nine signs to repeal any ordinances in conflict thereof, and to provide an effective date hereof and direct the city clerk to publish the ordinance in full with the following amendments. One, for section nine point zero four, signs not requiring a permit, add section I dash three. Two, nine point zero nine. Correction, nine point one zero. Additional regulations for signs requiring a permit, number four, projecting signs. A number allowed, I changing the language of one side, one sign per building to one sign per side per entry excluding alleyways.
Per public entry. That we're.
And one sign per side, per public entry excluding alleyways. And three, nine point one zero point six maximum wall sign area. Add I three to the chart under max wall sign. Max wall sign area. And then for size, use one hundred square feet.
Motion, do I have support?
I support.
Uh, thank you. Sir, roll call vote, please.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Underhill. Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Remember Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves us to item fourteen, uh, public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Uh, anyone wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Regis Glunler, three, four, eight, Butler Court in Marsh. Just this last discussion, I think this council has spent more time on sign details than any other subject this, this year. Unfortunately, when you're doing that, a member of the audience made some very good comments and requests, which were not even addressed in your discussion at all. That is a fairly common thing with this council. You should not have passed out order, you should have tabled and considered, considered her input into that stuff. There were some very good specific comments on that and they weren't even addressed. Just whatever. Also leading to that, I brought up several times about community engagement with having coffee hours, open houses. I've, I've approached a couple of the council members, thought it was a good idea, haven't heard anything about it. If this council wants to have community engagement and community involvement, you've got to make an effort to take up their concerns, talk to the citizens and get some input from them. This is a good time to do it because you got the five-year plan revision going on. You've got the future use of the mega site out there. Get some community involvement, ask what the people want. Don't just assume that you know what they want. Let them tell you what they want. And the last thing I've got, I've brought up several times, an environmental planner for the city. Five-year plan doesn't mention anything. That's one of my comments. That position should be in the five-year plan. There's gonna be more and more environmental concerns with more heavy industry, with stormwater and all kinds of things. That is an essential position for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plume. Any other public comments on, or any other comments on non-agenda items this evening? Yes, sir.
Mary Wayne Adams again, six point two West Green Street. Uh, ditto to what Regis just said. I hope I didn't use up my two minutes. And consistent with what, uh, Mr. Beg was saying earlier, uh, this whole premise of mandating external inspection of, uh, plumbing systems, uh, you know, residential private plumbing systems, uh, particularly when your website says that your concern is with, you know, commercial, uh, commercial, uh, plumbing systems. But, uh, I heartily object to being mandated to be subject to an inspection for a contingency that is impossible at my house. This is all about trying to prevent cross-contamination from non-potable water sources. Well, at my house, and I worked on the plumbing system many times, very familiar with it. There is no attachment to a secondary plumbing system. There is no possibility of a non-potable contamination coming from some sort of catastrophic failure on the public side, which would cause a pressure drop. It cannot happen. But somehow you were trying to do this contractual bullying where you're coming in, forcing your services on me and then demanding a signature after the fact. Uh-uh, that ain't gonna work. Uh, you know, I got lots of time, uh, to litigate, you know, and, uh, we can push this as far as you want, but, uh, you know, HydroCorp, you know, sounds like an evil villain in a Hollywood movie, uh, has no authority to come in and try to bully me, uh, into making a contract. There's more.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else wishing to address council on non-agenda items this evening? Saying none, we'll move to item fifteen, council on manager communications. Members, Skibby.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Member Gates.
I, I would just say I want to thank the members of the, the public for their comment. And regarding the, the signed ordinance, um, you know, the, the, that ordinance is a result of months of work on the part of city staff and a number of discussions, including a work session on the part of city council. So, um, like all our ordinances, we'll continue to review those and make sure that they match up with the reality on the ground of what, you know, what needs to be done. Um, and, you know, regularly, if we run into a problem, we'll go back and amend an ordinance if it's, if it's not working, but, um, it, it is a result of a process. Uh, I, I do want to say I agree with Mr. Mr. Adams about the state mandated cross-connection program, uh, that I do not like it, uh, but it, 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 uh, it comes from the state and, and maybe Manager Perry can speak to it a little bit more. Cause I, I know the gentleman who had other questions about it had to, had to run, but maybe we can, uh, learn a little bit more about that. But, uh, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Hackworth.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Member Traver.
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Underhill.
Nothing. Thank you.
For Chaney Huggett.
Airport Board did not meet today, so we'll try to, uh, reconvene next month. I believe the breakfast is not this weekend. It is, I believe, ah, it won't come up. What date? The twenty? Third? The twenty-third of, uh, August. It'll be the next flying in, drive-in breakfast.
Thank you. See you, Manager Perry.
Uh, first, before I, and if you'll indulge me, I actually have Director Davenport come up and speak to the cross-connection control program, just because again, it is a state mandated program. We are a public water supply. We don't have discretion. We either do that or the state mandates us through a consent order, which none of us want to happen, obviously in the community. But Director Davenport can speak to that. But the other item I have is our national night out tomorrow night. It's a free event at the fairgrounds from four to eight P M. And you can have some good interactions with our public safety team. So I encourage folks to attend that.
Thank you. Director Davenport.
Good evening. Um, this city is implementing and has contracted with a company called HydroCorp to, um, start, um, our residential cross-connection, um, contamination control process. It is a state-manded, state-mandated program. Residential cross-connection has been in the state guidelines for several years. And most recently, they are enforcing against it. We received, um, our sanitary sewer and san- sanitary survey on the water side. It's a bad name for something on the water side, but it's called a sanitary survey. They do them every five years and, um.
For a moment. Gentlemen, if you need to have a conversation, would you please step out of the chambers? Thank you.
So, um, on our most recent survey for the water, it, it was noted that we are not, we had not completed our required inspections under our residential cross-connection program. So it has been noted and it was indicated that you need to do this. Um, we had already started the process of contracting with our, our vendor to do the work. For years, we've been implementing a commercial and industrial cross-connection survey program. So this is something that you, users on the industrial side are very well, um, are used to. Uh, they understand the role of HydroCorp. They understand that they have to do these inspections. They have more likely chances from, uh, equipment and processing of water, pressurized systems, things like that, of having a cross, uh, connection. But they know they have to get surveyed. They schedule it. It happens. The reporting happens and it's all, it's done. On the residential side, the survey, the inspection requirements are much less stringent. So it's once every ten years, a home has to be inspected. We are, we have, um, a map that's posted on the website and a, and our webpage that we are doing the first section of town and we will do a new section for the next, each year for the next ten years. So, um, again, it is an inspection that is once every ten years. There are things that may be found in a homeowner's plumbing that they may have to correct. Um, some of the high-level, most frequent issues are outdoor spigots not having a correct backflow prevention or something like that. Our contractor will have a simple thread-on tool that can be used or fitting, excuse me, a threaded on fitting that can be given out and will be, will be given out to, to help offset that simple solution being like, okay, you're missing this on this, these two spigots. Here's these, thread them on, you're good to go. If homes were constructed under permits by a certified plumbing, plumbing and plumber and inspected appropriately, there's, there should not be any issues. But it is something that we are being required to implement and execute.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is there any way that we can get this information out? That is not Facebook?
I mean, that's. So it's currently, we have a dedicated webpage, um, linked under the water department on the website. We have been doing, um, Facebook posts, so yes. Um, we can issue additional notices in the paper. We did do some press release work, but we have not done something every week of the last couple of weeks. We have, um, each home is also given three notices. So the first notice has gone out via mail, second notice has gone out via mail. And now we are giving out third notices that you have to schedule your appointment. You don't have to complete it within five days or ten days. You have to get it scheduled. And our contractor has a scheduling system where they're, they're in town for a couple of days and they fill And our contractor has a scheduling system where they, they're in town for a couple of days and they fill up their schedule. And then like, if those couple of days don't work for you, then, okay, we're gonna be back in like three weeks. Then they fill up their schedule that way. So it's a three-notice process, and, uh, and yes, on the third and final notice, we do say if you do not comply and get scheduled for an inspection, you will be turned off. And that is, um, typically when people get it done. Go ahead.
Questions? Because I've got one, I got a notice too, and I think I've ignored at least two of them.
I'm the same. I, life is busy, right? It's not, it's, you know, but it's just, it's, that's how we have to get attention to it.
Scott spoke about because I hadn't seen anything. Then I saw a Facebook post, but I really, I haven't had time to even think about it, but, um, my questions are, seems I know it's the state, but it seems kind of odd that two or three years ago, I was, I had to get a new meter, so I had to let someone in my home. They, they changed the meter and I was all good to go. Last year or the year before, I had, they had something done, they made me to check. What was that?
The lead service.
The lead service, so, you know, I complied with that. And then, you know, now I've got this, it just seems like a lot of things that I have to do that I don't understand as a homeowner or a resident, why I have to do them when I'm, you know, I've been living in my home for nine or ten years, and with some people, probably fifty. The other thing is, is, you know, you said, you know, the last thing is, is, you know, we're gonna shut off the water or whatever. Is that part of the mandate from the state, or is that something we are adding to the mandate from the state?
Our utility, right, so our utility rules and regulations require that we have access to homes where meters are set for observate, for inspection and look at the meters or any other language regarding like interior plumbing that's at risk of, at risk to the public water supply. So, um, does the state mandate specifically say, to, to say that we'll shut you off? I don't know. That is, that, um, I, just being honest, I don't know if that is included in there. That is our process for, for ensuring we get compliance. We did the same thing. Yeah, I understand. I, I have, you're.
Just the last thing, I had a meter a couple of years ago. They weren't very happy with me because they had to help me move stuff so they could actually do whatever they do in the inside, but.
Yeah.
I had to move the stuff so they could move again, yeah. It's too heavy for me, you know, so, yeah.
I haven't gotten a notice at, at my house, so forgive me. I don't, I don't know. Is it, I know on the commercial side, you have to pay for the inspection. Is that the same on the residential side? People have to pay for, for HydroCorp to come in? No, okay.
No, we contract, we're paying for them out of our utility rates. If there's deficiencies, then you will have to pay for the corrections.
Well, I, I feel better about that, knowing that, because on the commercial side, we, it's like, oh, have these people come in, and by the way, you're paying for them to come in. It's, it's irritating. On the commercial side, but I like that the residents don't have to pay that, so that's good.
So if you did, uh, let's say you did updates ten years ago, fifteen years ago, according to guidelines at that time. Things have changed in the last fifteen years, so then if you've done those updates, you have to pay to to fix what was done right fifteen years ago, to comply to what is what we have to.
What is code today?
Correct.
Yes. It's no different than if you wanted to remodel your house and part of it was out of code, but you needed to bring it up to code to it's, it's like the same type of process.
Right, but the real intent of the program is to protect the public water supply. So when we talk about a cross-connection, what that is, is preventing something that we don't want going through the service from your home into the main and going into your neighborhood. That's the whole purpose of the program. Again, it's not to get into pe- people's basements just to get into people's basements. It's, it's really to protect the public water supply. So in theory, if there was the code ten years ago, shouldn't have been allowing anything to get into the public water supply. But perhaps there's been some upgraded technologies with vacuum breakers or reduced pressure backflow that now allows for something like that to be installed in your home, and they would be checking to make sure that that functions correctly.
To the gentleman's concerns earlier in public comment, if someone is concerned about, um, us, you know, strangers entering their home, we, we have and we will, um, provide city staff to be there when the contractor's there. And, you know, we, we will do that if, if requested. We did that with the meter change program.
Have, um, have we ever looked at, had sending out a a, a letter on city letterhead, letting them know they're gonna be contacted by a contractor?
The introductory letter is on city letterhead, but it is from the contractor. So it's like dual branded. We could do, you, I mean, we can always do more when it comes to communication. I mean, we could I could spend all day working on cross-connection communication. Um, so it just kind of, we have to find that balance point of what makes sense. I think, you know, just hearing some of the comments, some ideas would be just like increased paying for notices in the paper. And, um, I don't, maybe direct letters to the group, to the group that's targeted for that year earlier in the year.
You know, the first thing I got was a little poster that looked like John.
Yeah.
Or John goes, um, John goes. The second one was, um, city letterhead, and I went, huh. And, oh, really? Okay, and that's as far as that one's gone so far, but, um, we'll make my little appointment as much as I wanted to get a manual and say no.
I would also suggest there be some monitoring on Facebook. I know there have been comments to the posts made, but no, nobody's responding to any of those. Some of those are the comments that you just, we're gonna get regardless of what we post about. But, um, some are concerns, and then to make sure somebody is responding with, even just pointing them to the website again for more information, um, just reiterating what's already there. But sometimes that's just what it takes. Yeah, it is there, but still, people, people, the, I think majority comments right now, we didn't vote on this. But, either do we. We are all stating it now. We don't want to do this, but it's, it's, it's passed on by the state, so.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Anything for Mr. Perry? Thank you. And, of course?
Um, I will just say we finally got our invoice for early voting. It came from an original estimate of twelve thousand dollars to under twelve hundred dollars, so we were very pleased with the amount of state funding that was able to come in and to help offset that for our local taxpayers.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, I'll note that we've had, um, several spectacular events in the city, uh, since we last met. Uh, the, the Oaklawn celebration, uh, was fantastic and very well attended. Motor Fest was a huge success, almost three hundred vehicles, uh, on display, and uh, lots of great events throughout the day. Um, as, uh, City Manager Perry mentioned, National Night Out is tomorrow night at the fairgrounds. Uh, encourage everybody to go out and, um, talk to our, our great, uh, first responders and, uh, celebrate them. Uh, and then, uh, as usual, we have home tour coming up, uh, real fast, their sixtieth annual, so we're all looking forward to that. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll oppose the same sign. We are adjourned.